Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the meeting for July 12, 2022. Time is 9:31 a.m. and Erica, can you do the roll call?
Commissioner Henry.
I made it on time. Proud of myself. So yes, I'm here.
Commissioner Tedesco.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here. If everyone could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, good morning, everyone. I just need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
The motion passes five zero. We don't have any awards and presentations this morning. Erica, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do have one person signed up today, Kathy Moore.
Okay. Kathy, if you want to come on down, state your name and address for the record.
Easy one today, though. It's really easy, I promise. Kathy Moore, 11862 Altura. I'm just here to ask for your help to get a no left turn sign removed, please. On Cameron Street, south of 120, coming out of that neighborhood between Chambers and Sable, is a no left turn sign that I'm asking you to get your help to get removed. I've already submitted three requests to CDOT and to Adam Engels, and it's still there. Let me tell you how it got there. A friend of mine just wanted cars to go a little slower over 120 from the bridge. So she, CDOT's solution was to put a no left turn sign there. But what it effectively did was cut a major route out of our neighborhood going left on 120. And people do it anyway. I see them ignoring that sign all the time. But, you know, with all the construction and all the new houses, Chambers has gotten so very congested. So right now, we have to go through the neighborhood and make a left turn onto Chambers, which is very difficult at this point. So sometimes you have to turn right and then make a U and then go back up to the light at 120 in Chambers and then turn left, as opposed to zipping out in the neighborhood and just making the left onto 120th. So this is easy today. I've got a copy of my third request to CDOT. And if you guys could help me get that no left turn sign removed, I'd be grateful. My friend who shall be nameless would be grateful. And we don't want anything else there. Just get the sign removed. Who wants this?
Okay, thank you, Kathy. We have our Public Works departments in the audience. Janet, she's waving her hand. If you want to hand that to her. Thank you so much. Thanks, Janet. Thanks, Kathy, for being here. Anyone else, Erica?
That was everyone signed up.
Fantastic. Any elected official communication? Commissioner Tedesco.
So a couple of things. First off, I think that's one thing I can agree with you on that you've brought to the board is that no left-hand turn. The only issue that I have with it is that it is a safety issue. In the mornings, when we get the rush hour traffic, coming over the 120th Bridge, you drive directly into the sun, and there's been a lot of accidents there. And there's been a lot of rear-ending there due to the traffic that is trying to pull out or pull into that intersection. But as you stated before, there's no real good alternative. So I've been working and talking with Commerce City, and we're trying to escalate or improve or try to get some action on 112th, which would alleviate a lot of that traffic using 120th from those neighborhoods to access I-76, which is going to be good. I just don't have a real good timeline as to when that's going to open. It'll go out by the new rec center. So I kind of agree with you, and this isn't a back and forth. So I'm just going to tell you that, you know, I kind of agree with you on it, but I also understand CDOT and Commerce City and their points, especially concerning safety. I absolutely would go with safety before convenience. But I absolutely believe they need to deal with it in a different way and provide some type of access for that community better than Chambers and what they have currently. So I'm on board. Just know that I will take safety over convenience every time, okay? The other issue that I wanted to bring up, or not issue, but I wanted to congratulate Colorado Kids Belong. They opened up their new programming for foster kids here in Colorado and I was proud to be a part of it. And I just wanted to say thank you to them for bringing another much-needed service for our foster families and foster communities. So I just wanted to give a public shout out to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, thank you. Completely agree. And I feel like we spend half our lives advocating with CDOT. So welcome to hear your concerns so that we can discuss with them better ways to serve our community. It's really curious when those jurisdictions overlap with residential areas. And so thank you for giving that information to our staff. With regard to just general comments, I want to thank our staff and everyone who has gone out of their way, particularly at the fairgrounds, for really spectacular celebrations over the past several weeks. The Fourth of July, we celebrate Stars and Stripes on July 3rd. It was truly spectacular and required a lot of staff effort. And then it was really beautiful to see our cities as well. And I want to thank Mother Nature for giving us a lot of rain so that we all felt safe to have our fireworks displays and have that sense of community. It really was absolutely beautiful to see everyone out and celebrating. So thank you to all our staff who worked really hard at the fairgrounds with many events over the past several weeks, the most recent of which was the Stars and Stripes. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. No other commissioners want to speak this morning? Don't see any, so I just need a motion for the consent calendar, please.
Move to approve as presented?
The motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Board. Now we're on to the county manager. Good morning, Alicia.
Good morning, Commissioners. Great to see you all. Our first item is a resolution approving Amendment One to the agreement between Adams County and Express Staffing Agenda in the amount of $667,200 for subsidized employment services. And our contract administrator, Meg Pickens, will present this item and the next.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here today to request the contract renewal for Express Professionals. Express Professional Agency is the employer of record for all participants that are in TANF Subsidized Employment Program. Subsidized employment is for TANF eligible county, Adams County, participants. It's a planned structured learning experience that takes place on a work site for a limited amount of time. This is a paid work-based learning experience for participants to gain job skills. Employment occurs within the private, for-profit sector, the nonprofit sector, and the public sector. As the employer of record, Express Professional provides onboarding, pay, transmits payroll, taxes, provides, and administers unemployment insurance and workers' compensation insurance to all assigned participants. After subsidized employment placement ends, Express Professional staff assists with participants with job search. July 2021 to June 2022 was the first year of the program. We had a very lofty goal of 100 participants, and unfortunately, this wasn't met, as sometimes new programs take a while to get rolling. Since April 2022, Adams County Workforce and Business Center has been streamlining the referral process to make it easier for all programs to refer to subsidized employment, all programs that serve TANF eligible clients. The new referral process includes a pilot program with subsidized employment case manager that works closely with the business services team in our Workforce and Business Center, myself as the contract administrator and Express Professional Agency. In this short time using this process, it has proven to increase referrals and placements. And the Workforce and Business Center is confident in year two will be more successful. The annual fee for this contract is not to exceed $667,200, and the service dates will be July 1st to June 30th, 2023. Any questions?
Questions from the Board? Commissioner Odoricio.
Yeah, okay. So the first year was 1.3 million, right? And how many? Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Okay. And how many did we serve?
I believe we have 16 current placements. And most of those, I want to say 11 of them, happened between April and now with our new pilot program.
Okay. And so I guess I'm still trying to understand. So does that mean like for that, and then we're adding another 600,000?
That 1.3 million ended June 30th. And this is just a new contract. Our new goal is to serve 50 participants this year with our new program and, you know, the promise that we're already getting a lot more referrals and placements with the new pilot program we have. We believe strongly that we can get there. And all the supervisors and case managers are pushing for this program in a way I didn't see in the first eight months of the program.
When you say that, what do you mean by that?
They, I think, case management thought this was a new program that was more optional. And now with more discussion and more push, they are seeing the benefit to clients. Because any clients that are on TANF, they don't lose their benefits by getting this employment. It's a paid apprenticeship, pretty much, and it won't affect their TANF benefits. So they can get work experience, boost their resume, get job skills, and then, you know, find a job later on without affecting their benefits. And I don't know if all the case managers completely understood that that was the case in the first few months.
Okay. And so did that whole 1.3 million get spent on those 15 people?
No.
So what's left over?
I do not have those numbers in front of me.
Right. The reason I ask is it looks like that we spent about $90,000 per person in that first year. And so I'm a little confused by the program and that we're going to spend, what, 10,000 to 15,000 expected per person this next year? So I'm trying to understand the program, I guess, a little bit more. It's where we help pay and subsidize the pay that an employer would give to incentivize them to hire someone with less skills and experience, right?
Yes, the employers don't have to hire on, but they can. And we have at least one client that has been hired on through placement in Adams County, actually. The department liked them so much, they ended the apprenticeship and moved forward with full-time employment.
Yeah, I totally support the apprenticeship programs. What I'd like to understand is what happened with that 1.3 million? And it may not be that something we can answer here. Maybe it's too detailed. And if you guys want to continue, and I'd be okay with that, and having a... Was this already a study session?
I can, I have the numbers in my laptop.
I could jump in here. Good morning, Commissioners. So essentially, when we build a contract and we want to have a certain outcome, we have a dollar amount within this particular contract. It was a 1.3 million. Since we didn't spend all that dollar amount, that goes back into our overall TANF bucket, essentially, our total allocation. And then, and then we redraft and say, okay, this is our new goal for the year. So that's not going away and underspent. That goes back into our overall TANF allocation. So as we start drafting this, and again, I don't have the specific number, but say there was $500,000 left, that goes back in to our overall allocation. And then we build the future contract, and then this one is 667. So essentially, it's 500,000 that we previously had left over, adding the $100,000 essentially onto this one to a total of 667. So it's not that we didn't and we wasted that dollar amount from that first contract. It's that we're refocusing and looking at a different process and moving forward with kind of a more realistic and streamlined process to meet the demands of our TANF population ongoing.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I don't feel comfortable voting on this today based on the fact that I don't know where that money went last time. So that's what I...
Commissioner, it sounds like what you're looking for is maybe a budget breakdown for the entirety of the program.
Before we go any further, if I could speak, please?
Yes, go ahead. I didn't know Commissioner Odoricio was done.
Yeah.
I wasn't.
As soon as, yeah, go ahead. But before we make any kind of other emotion, I would like to speak.
I haven't made a motion. I'm expressing my concern based on what I'm hearing.
It's the point of order. Commissioner Odoricio, please finish your comments, then we'll go to Commissioner Henry.
I wasn't making a motion. I'm saying I'm concerned about this because I want to find out where the 1.3 million went last year, since it was only spent on 15 people.
Okay, Commissioner Henry.
I'm personally comfortable with this. I understand your concern. And I think this should have been brought forward to us in a study session so we could have understood the program a little more. Totally understand that. I'm willing to vote in favor of this program with the condition that the fact that the staff brings this forward to us so we can understand the program more. I understand, and I love the program, the fact that a lot of the caseworkers didn't understand that they weren't losing their TANF dollars if they went into this program. Because a lot of times, having been there, done that, if you lose your food stamps or your SNAP programs, or you lose your childcare, it's hard to go into a program knowing that you're not going to be able to feed your family. So I'm willing to support this. If the other Commissioners want to continue it, that's entirely up to them. But for me personally, I will be supporting this today and voting for it.
Commissioner Odoricio, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah. If we had to continue it, I mean, it sounds like there's still money left that you can continue doing what you're doing with the money that was left from last year, correct?
Correct.
So I'm okay with asking. I will be then, making a motion after everyone has a chance to speak and ask questions to continue until we get that other information, knowing that a continuation is not going to halt or stop the program from proceeding in the interim.
I'll jump in here. So Eddie, just to paraphrase what you stated, is that the initial contract was 1.3 million. All of that wasn't utilized? Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so then the new, not necessarily new scope, but when we did the amendment, this is more of a realistic number of based on services that are needed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And then with the work in Meg and her team in the Workforce and Business Center, they streamlined that process and really educated the TANF caseworkers.
Okay.
As you know, you know, there was a lot of movement with people at home and in person and really understanding what that program was going to do for their clients and how it was going to affect, back to Commissioner Henry's point, how it was going to affect their benefits, is really, you know, something they wanted to learn more about. And then it was our first year for this program. Other counties have this program in place and have had it for years. It's something that we really worked hard on to uplift. So as we go into year two, we have a lot better idea of what that looks like in education behind it. So when TANF case managers are working with their particular participants or their clients, they could really educate them on what that's going to look like, rather than saying you should do this and not having all the information. So we really are more comfortable going into year two to meet this number.
Okay, terrific. And then county manager, did you finish your comments or you'd like to finish your comments? Okay.
If my mistake in rule of order, I was trying to clarify what the need going forward was.
Okay.
No problem.
All right. So I'm prepared to vote on this this morning. If it is our normal course of business to bring this type of contract to a study session to discuss, I think that that was a reasonable request by Commissioner Henry. So we can just have that as part of the procedure on the way to getting approved and renewed. That would be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I'm ready for a motion for this item if the Board's ready to vote.
I move to approve.
And for procedural reasons, I'm voting no.
So the motion passes four yes and one no. Okay, county manager.
The next item is a resolution approving Amendment One to the agreement between Adams County and Friends First in the amount of $331,808.38 for pregnancy prevention services. And Meg, once again.
Hello. So I am requesting approval for the Friends First contract from RFP 2021.610. Friends First provides educational and mentoring programs designed to empower teens and make positive life choices and develop healthy relationships. Programs include STARS, which is Students Teaching About Relationships and Success Mentoring Program, which high school students are trained by Friends First to mentor middle school students in areas such as goal-setting, healthy relationships, communication, and the benefits of sexual risk avoidance and avoiding high-risk activities. Project AIM is their adult identity mentoring. It's a positive youth development program that is evidence-based for teen pregnancy prevention and HIV prevention. Friends First has met our expectations for the initial year of this agreement, especially since there were barriers due to pandemic, doing hybrid or in-person or virtual services. They still provided the following. The STARS program has served 17 mentors and 48 mentees in the Academy of Charters in Westminster High School. They assisted 52 youth through Project AIM at Stewart Middle School, and they assist 21 students in the STARS Mentor Life Summit at the University of Colorado, Colorado Springs, on March 5, 2022. They provided three small group workshops and assemblies virtually on pregnancy prevention services, which consisted of 34 youth in attendance. In option year one, Friends First is planning a parent education event on strengthening the relationship and listening communication skills between parents and teens at Mercy Housing. They have exciting news. Friends First is being acquired by Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Colorado in August of 2022, which at that point, Big Brother, Big Sister will carry on the work and legacy of Friends First by facilitating their programs that I mentioned, STARS and Project AIM programming. Friends First is planning, oh, sorry. They are also planning the summer leadership mentor training. And this is a multi-day overnight leadership training for youth mentors across the nation. And the majority are from Adams County and will be provided with leadership education, risk avoidance workshops, and positive youth development content and more. Friends First will be acquired by Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Oh, no. So sorry, I had my, my dates or my last point is not on my notes. I'm so sorry. But this contract is not to exceed $331,808.38 for Friends First. And when they are acquired by Big Brother, Big Sister, the contract will then be amended to reflect their new name as well. Any questions?
Yes, thank you, Meg. Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, just a clarifying question. I was looking through the packet, and it wasn't super clear what geographic areas within the county this program is intended to be available from. And I heard you mention Mercy Housing and then also the Academy Charter School, that those are very specific pockets. I'm just kind of curious, who is eligible to participate in this program and what does that look like?
So actively, Friends First is always trying to get into any schools that would like to have their program within Adams County. So they're, you know, I think the tricky time of year is right now where they're trying to get into... So they're, you know, I think the tricky time of year is right now where they're trying to get into more high schools and middle schools to implement their programs, but it's getting connected with the right, right people, right teachers, people who make decisions within those schools. So it is open to all of Adams County. You know, Stewart Middle School is one of their big middle schools as well that they serve consistently.
I'm, I'm trying to... Let me think. I see that Commissioner Henry has a question, so let me think for a second.
Commissioner Henry.
So who is Friends First? Because when I Google, it comes up as a Christian organization.
I am not sure on their affiliation with religion, but I know that they are just a mentorship program for...
So my, my concerns are, are they, you know, anti-gay or lesbian organization? Are they, you know?
I, I have not had those discussions with them. I have not also gotten the feeling that they are non-inclusive of any certain type of people.
Anything further, Commissioner Henry? Okay, Commissioner Pinter?
Yeah, in trying to read about them, because the documents provided in our packet were really short, I'm not entirely sure what this program does. Like, I, I know it's a mentorship program, but I don't, I don't know what they do. Like, and I don't know what outcomes they have. And the Academy Charter Schools is not necessarily one of our more disadvantaged schools. And so if they're mentoring kids who have already selected into a K-12 school focused on academic excellence, like, I just don't know. Like, I don't know, I don't have a lot of understanding of what this does and if it's providing resources to kids who already have them. I, I just don't, I don't get it. And I, and I second Commissioner Henry's question. And also, the pregnancy prevention piece, like, I see no medical credentials on their website. And no, I, I see nothing that would say that they know anything about teens, you know, or birth control, or how that works, or how to talk to teens, or intimate partner violence, which is actually surprisingly common in our high schools. Like, I just don't know what they do. It's, it's a lot of money for a program that I don't know. And Mercy Housing is, as far as I understand, Denver-based. I'm sure some Adams County residents end up there. So I'm just, I don't know what they, this program does.
So it is, it is a peer-to-peer mentorship. So once the high schoolers are trained by Friends First, they do get paired with younger peers in middle school to help them build healthy and safe relationships and open that communication and know the risk factors to look for in, you know, domestic violence situations or how, how to avoid that, how to stand up for themselves and, you know, open those lines of communication when someone does need support or help.
Okay, I have two commissioners that would like to speak, and then I see you're up there, Eddie. So if we can have Commissioner Odor... Yeah. Let's go and go to Commissioner Odoricio, then Henry, and then Eddie, we can follow up with you and Meg.
Let me, first off, by saying you're doing an outstanding job. You're getting a lot of questions that came out of left field. But you're doing an outstanding job today, and we appreciate that. I will say that I think, I'd be okay with doing a presentation on this to try to understand, like, at a study session. Love to know what the impacts would be on a continuance of this, so we can learn more about it. I think at one point in the past, Commissioner Pinter did ask for some criteria in our contracting with these nonprofits, regardless of what they are about inclusivity. And I, I think we can include that request, and it was done through us. Everyone supported that, to have that part of the discussion. And then if you say, look, here's the questionnaires, or here's our inclusivity piece, are there some modifications we need to make based on some recent information, whatever it is? So we feel comfortable that when we approve something like this, that the inclusivity piece is, is there. So in my opinion, I'd be willing to entertain a, pushing this to a study session to have a discussion on, on this particular one, as well as that inclusivity criteria that we asked for a while ago.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henry?
$300,000 is a lot of money for just a couple of schools. And do you have any idea what the success rate is on this? And how many students is actually, you know, being served from this? I, I just, something like Friends First just doesn't seem like it would be very... It's kind of like Just Say No back in the 80s. And that drug, you know, my kids went through it. Maybe it helped one child, I'm not sure. I, I think, you know, maybe not. The other child, not so much. It was the Army that helped him. But, you know, yeah, I'm not too sure if Friends First is a very successful program to receive $300,000, especially when it's going into a community that is extremely well-off. So that's kind of where I'm at in regards to this. So right now, I, I'm highly suspicious of the organization.
Okay, we have... Eddie, go ahead, and then I'm going to jump in after you. So go ahead.
And, and you're doing a great job. This is what happens when they don't bring us in weekly for these, you know?
So I just want to jump in and, and kind of highlight some of the things that they do. Meg did a great job explaining this. But they do work with quite a bit of youth. They're also in our Commerce City area, so Adams City Middle and High School. We, and Meg, more than me, and we, but Meg is working with Friends First to really meet the needs of our community where, where it fits. So right now, we're lacking services within Friends First in the Aurora portion of Adams County. So that's something we've worked with them on, as well as kind of the Federal Heights and Thornton area as well. So that's something that we would want to get in more high schools and middle schools with this particular service. And just to kind of go back to the point about the equity piece, we have added that language within any RFP that's coming out of Human Services. So that is in there. This is Amendment One. So that was within their RFP when they applied for this particular service. I'm not exactly sure, and I don't want to say for sure not what's on their website or not, but I know when they applied for the RFP, they did have that language that they read through that if, if they're applying or wanting to be considered for a particular contract with us, they have to, you know, be open to that equity piece for everyone and, and all. So and I know that they, they had that specific language within RFP that went out based on the feedback that we got from the board in the past. I just want to point that out as well. But I, I, I think it's a good point that Commissioner Odoricio just talked about, is really tabling this and coming back for a presentation, because I think that would help out a lot. They are a great organization in my mind. We've worked with them for many years. As you all know, I was in Meg's position before my current position, and they have some great outcomes. Worked with a number of youth in our, in our county, and I would love to highlight that in a presentation in the, in the, in the future.
Thank you, Eddie. Appreciate your feedback, and thank you to the board. I'm just going to jump in here real quick, and I think you're correct. We should probably table this, have it come to, back to a study session so we can learn more about Friends First. And then also, I heard in the presentation that they're going to be acquired by Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So I don't know if this is a space, pregnancy prevention, that Big Brothers, Big Sisters plays in or provide service. So I would like to know how that handoff looks. And then also, the service coverage area where Adams County. I think the other thing that came up with this one or the prior agreement was if, are they LGBTQ-friendly? I mean, I think that's also important. I understand it's pregnancy services, but still. And then we're, we're bringing up a health department. So when we're talking about the broader picture, is this a service that is under the umbrella of the Health Department? And I don't know how the funding mechanism looks, but certainly that has been a priority, I understand, from this board that we contracted with Tri-County Health. So if this is something that we can absorb as a county, still provide the service, the coverage, and it goes through our Health Department, and maybe we still continue to contract out. I think that that's something else that we need to look at when we strategize, because at the end of the day, dollars and cents do make something that the board and service coverage is something that we're interested in. So I would agree. Heidi, do we need any? Oh, so sorry, Commissioner Tedesco. And then I'll go to Heidi on procedure.
So first of all, I am so glad that you brought up that we were brought the language for inclusivity. We have incorporated that language. I know that I heard a statement that said that hadn't been brought to us, but it has, and it's been incorporated in our policy and used very successfully. I know because we have lost some providers based on that policy and then regained those providers based on they changed their policies. So I know that we have it, and I know that we've utilized it, and I appreciate you bringing that up and explaining that. The other issue on this, that I, if you, if it's moved to study session, I would like to know, how long have we had this contract with them, right? Because I know this is Amendment One, so we've already approved this contract before. What is the overall contract worth? Because that's something that Big Brothers, Big Sisters will be acquiring and coming back for. And how many of those amendments were in that contract? So was it a three-year, five-year, what was it, right? Just giving you, I would love for you to bring that back, as well as what was requested before, and that's the statistics. And I do appreciate their work and what they're trying to do in the Commerce City area. We don't have real affluent schools in the Commerce, Commerce City area, so I appreciate that work being done there. But that's the kind of information. I'd like to see if it has to go back to study session, okay? But thank you very much. That was, I'm grateful that you brought that up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, Heidi?
Commissioners, I think you have two options. You could deny this particular resolution, or you can just table it and ask the staff bring it back after the board has more opportunity to evaluate.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Commissioner Odoricio?
I, I would not support denying it. So I would ask that if, unless there's a discussion remaining from the board that we ask to table this and bring it back at a future date. To be determined if we need a specific date, then I'm going to ask staff to step in and give us that specific date. Otherwise, I move to table.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do you need...
I would second, I would second that motion.
Oh, wait, that was my bad. I have to hit motion.
Yeah, I can't, I can't hit the button.
There you go.
So Erica, you're okay to correct this title? Because we've jumped forward, and this is actually a resolution to approve, and we're going to table this, so...
That's correct. I have on my end that it's being continued.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that. And the motion to table this and bring it back to the board is passed five to zero. Okay, Alicia, thank you so much. I didn't make...
Great, thanks. The next item is a resolution approving Change Order Four to the agreement between Adams County and Roxall Consulting Group, Inc. in the amount of $126,500 for post-design services on the York Street Phase Two, 78th Avenue to 88th Avenue Improvement Project. And our project engineer, Jennifer Shee, will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. In July of 2018, Roxall Consulting Group, Inc. was awarded a agreement to provide design engineering services for the York Street Phase Two project between 78th Avenue and 88th Avenue. Change Order Four is being requested for post-design services that were not included in the original scope. Post-design services will support the bidding process and the construction activities throughout the construction duration. It is recommended to approve Change Order Four to the agreement with Roxall Consulting Group, Inc. in the amount of $126,500 for a total contract volume of $885,395.40 and to extend the agreement time to June 30, 2024.
Thank you, Jennifer. Questions from the board?
Unless there's a discussion, I move to approve as presented.
Second.
Phew, huh?
And the motion passes five to zero. Thank you so much, Jennifer. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I get the hard part. I get to pick up the paper.
Pick up the paper.
All right. The final item is a resolution approving license agreement between Adams County and Aggregate Industries for temporary installation of a conveyor system under East 168th Avenue. And our manager of development services, Jennifer Breder.
Morning, Commissioners. On March 9, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners approved a conditional use permit to allow Aggregate Industries to mine the Tucson South property, which is located north of Highway Seven and on both the east and west sides of Tucson Street. A condition precedent was included in the approval that requires the applicant to construct a conveyor belt system to move the mined materials north of a processing facility in Weld County. The conveyor system, per county approval, must go under East 168th Avenue, just west of Weld County Road 23 and 1/2. The placement and construction of private improvements within county right-of-way is generally not allowed, but can be permitted through a license agreement with the county. The license agreement sets conditions for construction of the conveyor system, removal of the conveyor system when the mining activities have ceased, bonding to ensure the removal of the system and restoration of the county's right-of-way. I'm here this morning for if you have any questions. So is our Development Review Engineer, Matt Emmons, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Jen. Questions from the board? Commissioner Henry?
So this is just part of the agreement that they made when they came forward, forwards a few months ago, I think it was January, February. Am I right?
Yeah, it was March of 2021. The Board of County Commissioners approved their conditional use permit, and this was required as one of the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tedesco? Okay.
Just because keeping the trucks off the roads is a major concern, and I think that this, this group has made every effort to, you know, meet what we have as a board put forward. And so with that, I would move that 22-554, a resolution approving license agreement between Adams County and Aggregate Industries for temporary installation of a conveyor system under East 168th Avenue, be approved.
Second.
And the motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Jen, and thank you to the applicant for being here this morning. All right, next on the agenda, County Attorney, Heidi.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have two executive sessions on your agenda today. The first pursuant to Colorado revised statute 2464024B for the purpose of receiving legal advice regarding the Board of Health.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. And the second is pursuant to Colorado revised statute 2464024B and E for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the Coats case.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Heidi. Both those pass five to zero. All right, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll return by 10:25, and we'll begin the land use hearings. Good morning, are we ready? All right, Alicia, do you want to?
Yes, um, first we'll start with withdrawal of an application for sign code text amendments, and Jim Ritter is here once again to explain.
Morning again, Commissioners. Um, you heard the sign code text amendments back on March eighth uh, of this year. In a regular public hearing, um, you had asked staff to um, reevaluate some of the recommendations we were making based upon some of the public feedback we've received and um, understand maybe the um, Supreme Court case, um, which now we have a decision on. Um, we've actually decided to withdraw the, the sign code text amendments, um, based upon that Supreme Court decision. We're going to go back to the drawing board and um, reevaluate uh, what we're going to be proposing to you. We'll come back in study session on August ninth.
Okay.
Or is it?
I don't think so, I think it's just we're letting you know.
We're good. Heidi's saying we're good. Thank you so much, Jen.
And um, I apologize, Commissioner Parker, you may want to ask, I don't believe there is anyone here, but since it was noticed, if there is any public comment on it?
Oh, I will get to that. Is there any public comment? It looks like almost nearly staff. Any questions from the board? Looking forward to the staff presentation in August? Okay, so I just need a motion? Oh, no, I don't, you said we don't need a motion? All right, so on to the next item, Alicia?
Great. Next is an application related to the Villa Lobos Minor Subdivision, and our planner Leila Bajlon will present this.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Leila Bajlon, I'm with the Community and Economic Development Department, and I am presenting on behalf of the case manager Greg Barnes. And this is case number PLT twenty-twenty dash twenty-eight, the Villa Lobos Minor Subdivision. And the address of the subject request is one-two-three-one West Sixty-eighth Avenue. So this request is for a minor subdivision final plat to create three lots on roughly point eight-five acres. These lots are intended to be used for single-family resident, uh, residential dwellings. The property owner is requesting this subdivision to allow for multiple family members to uh, be able to build adjacent to each other. And along with this minor subdivision final plat request, there is also a subdivision improvement agreement for public improvements. So this image shows the location of the subject parcel. It's located east of Pecos Streets along West Sixty-eighth Avenue. The midtown at Clear Creek Development can be seen directly to the south of the subject property, and then I seventy-six can be seen on the left-hand side of the screen. Surrounding properties are primarily single-family residential or residential associated with the Clear Creek, uh, midtown at Clear Creek Development. This image shows a close-up of the subject property. Currently, there are two single-family homes and associated accessory structures on the property. All structures are in disrepair, and the applicants are proposing to demolish all buildings if approved for the subdivision to allow for three new single-family resident, uh, residences to be built on the property. Uh, and the parcel does front West Sixty-eighth Avenue to the south. The current zoning on the property is residential one C, which serves as exclusively single-family residential. Uh, surrounding uh, properties are zoned as either residential one C, residential two or R three, uh, which is uh, our, our two zone district does allow for single-family residences and duplexes. And then our R three zone district does allow for townhomes, so it's more of a multifamily uh, zone district. And then again, the PUD to the south is midtown at Clear Creek. The future land use designation on the property is urban residential, uh, which would support zone districts that provide for uh, one dwelling unit per acre or greater. Uh, surrounding properties do share the urban residential, uh, future land use, uh, with some mixed-use employment and parks and open space to the south. So in reviewing for a minor subdivision final plat, uh, the criteria of approval include consistency with the comprehensive plan, that the request is consistent with the zone district standards, that the request conforms with the subdivision design standards, that the applicant has provided documentation of efficient, uh, sufficient water supply, that there's evidence of a sewage disposal system on the property, that uh, any topographical hazards have been identified, that there's adequate drainage impro- uh, improvements in place, that there's adequate public facilities and infrastructure that includes curb, gutter, and sidewalk. It requires conformance with the density standards of the underlying zone district, and the request is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding property. And the full criteria of approval are outlined in the criteria of approval manual that was provided to the Board of County Commissioners as well. So this image shows the final plat that was provided by the applicant. This shows three separate lots that will remain zoned as residential one C. All lots will front West Sixty-eighth Avenue to the south, and there is a drainage easement that is located on lots two and three, um, that was required by the county. And when looking at the residential one C zone district, there is a minimum lot size requirement of seven thousand square feet per lot and a minimum lot width of sixty-five feet per lot. Uh, the proposed lots in the subdivision are a minimum of twelve thousand three hundred and fifty square feet with a minimum lot width of seventy-four square feet. So all proposed lots are me- meeting the dimensional standards of the R one C zone district. And then when looking at some of the other requirements of the residential one seed, uh, zone district to determine compatibility, there is a maximum dwelling height of twenty-five feet, so this is our most restrictive zone district as far as dwelling height. There's a mi- uh, maximum accessory building height of six, sixteen feet, and then for setbacks that are required to meet a front setback of twenty feet, side setbacks of five feet if there is an attached garage pro- proposed, and then uh, rear setbacks of fifteen feet. So in looking at the proposed subdivision, uh, there is adequate water supply and sewer service to provide, uh, for all three lots. North Pecos Water and Sanitation has provided will-serve letters, uh, that they can, uh, provide water and sewer services to the property. And as part of this review, staff did send this, uh, will-serve letter out to the Division of Water Resources, and they have confirmed that North Pecos Water and Sanitation can provide for the three-hundred-year water supply required with any subdivision in Adams County. Uh, Excel Energy is committed to providing electrical services for the subdivision, and there are no geological hazards or geotechnical constraints associated with this property. So here are a couple images looking at the subject site. Uh, the top-left image is looking to the east along West Sixty-eighth Avenue. The subject property would be here, uh, behind the chain-link fence, and then midtown, uh, future filing would be located to the south, uh, primarily single-family residences along West Sixty-eighth Avenue. The the bottom-left is looking to the west along West Sixty-eighth Avenue. Again, the uh, subject property is located behind the chain-link fence, and you can see uh, some of the midtown development off in the distance. The bottom-right is looking directly to the north, uh, onto the subject property at one of the existing single-family homes. Again, these homes are in disrepair, and the applicant is proposing to demolish all structures to be able to build three new single-family residences if approved. And then, uh, the bottom-right is looking to the south at one of the future midtown filings. This is looking across West Sixty-eighth Avenue. So during the referral period, staff notified all property owners and occupants within a thousand feet of the subject site. Uh, we sent a total of three hundred and thirty notifications, and we did not receive any public comment on this case. We also noticed several referral agencies throughout this process within a two-mile buffer of the site. Uh, there were no objections to this request. Uh, Tri-County Health Department and the Division of Water Resources did provide comments associated with the development portion of this and not necessarily applicable to the plat. Uh, Tri-County typically Tri-County typically provides comments for demolition and asbestos, making sure there's no asbestos when removing those buildings. So staff today has determined that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. All lots will remain zoned as residential 1C, which will provide one dwelling unit per acre or greater, so it will be consistent with the future land use. The request complies with the minimum zone district standards, so all lots will meet the minimum lot size of 7,000 square feet and minimum lot size of 65 feet in width. And then the request is compatible with the surrounding area, so the surrounding properties are primarily single-family residents to the north, and then there is a midtown filing that will provide additional residences to the south. And infrastructure and services are provided to service this proposed subdivision, so there are water and sewer services as well as electrical services to this subdivision. So this case was heard at the Planning Commission on May 26th. The applicant was present and had no concerns with the staff report or the presentation. There was one member of the public there and provided concerns with drainage and topography on the site. Staff would like to point out that there is a drainage easement on the plat, so those concerns have been taken into account and have been noted on the plat. The Planning Commission just had questions related to the midtown filing to the south and what that would look like, but eventually they recommended approval of this request five to zero. So staff today is recommending approval of the final plat, and then the associated subdivision improvement agreement with 11 findings of fact and eight notes to the applicant. And that concludes my presentation. We do have the recommended findings of fact and notes to the applicant on the screen as well.
Okay, thank you so much, Leila. So questions from the board? Questions? I have one question for you, Leila. What is the long-term plan for West 68th Avenue?
Good morning.
Steve, Community and Economic Development Engineer 2. There are no plans. If you'll expand the aerial view, you'll see that 68th Avenue a few blocks to the east actually ends and becomes a north-south roadway. So there's no, no plans on building that out. Now with midtown, I'm sure they're going to develop that. There, there are half the cross-section to accommodate additional traffic, but it'll, you know, primarily be routed to the west.
Okay, so no curb, gutter, sidewalk is proposed for that area?
Oh, well, yeah, so the pedestrian facilities are encouraged on any roadway, but we don't have any plans on, you know, building out that cross-section above and beyond just the sort of, I guess it would be like a, probably the collector cross-section, but with rollover curb and gutter rather than vertical.
Okay.
And I don't think there's, they're not on the sidewalk program. They're not identifying this particular area right now for the sidewalk program, but the applicant is building sidewalk with their development. And then again, we're, with that development to the south, we're expecting the developer to build that out as well, which will be midtown.
Okay, that's the only question I had. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present, and would you like to make a presentation this morning?
Good morning, my name is Marlene Andrade. I am the owner of the property, not the applicant. I couldn't make it today.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
Uh, no. Just I'd appreciate your approval, because we've been waiting too long years for all this.
All right, appreciate you being here. Anyone from the public present that would like to speak? Not seeing anyone. Board discussion. Questions from the board? All right, no questions, and we're ready to vote.
All right, Madam Chair, unless there's a discussion, I move to approve PLT 2020-28 Villa Lobos Minor Subdivision. This is approval of the final plat with 11 findings, plat and associated subdivision improvements agreement with 11 findings of fact and eight notes. And I wish you all the best of luck, living near family.
He speaks from experience. He has the same setup. So he has the same setup, so.
Yeah, that's good. Second.
And the motion passes five to zero. Congratulations. At, okay, if no other additional items on the agenda, we are adjourned today at 10:39 a.m.